Call the meeting to order. All those willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody, mic up, please. Okay. Can I have an approval, a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Some of them.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Chrissy. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to number four, public forum. Nobody? Okay. Move on to number five, presentation. 5.1 FFA convention, Natalie Reisch.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Natalie Reisch. I am the Senior High FFA Advisor and also one of the agriculture education teachers here at Pipestone. At the end of October, we are sending our meat evaluation team to national convention to compete. They won the state contest last year in the spring, and then now they're able to actually go and compete. So we are asking your guys' permission to go to an overnight trip and are requesting funding for the school transportation, the school suburban, and to cover my substitute teaching person.
Does anybody have any questions? Any questions? How many students would be going?
There's four kids and then the meat evaluation coach, Phil Berg, and then I will be driving.
So two drivers and four kids.
Yep.
Do you take one suburban or?
Yes, we're taking one suburban.
Okay.
Okay.
Where is it located at?
Indianapolis, Indiana, at the convention center. Yep. So we're stopping two places along the way at some universities to study and also practice meat evaluation. And then I'm hoping they can get a little bit of a college tour while they're there so that they can get the experience since the whole team is seniors this year.
Okay, what are the four students?
Nate Bobbin dryer, Kendra Fullkarts, Tiana Muller, and then Emily Nelson.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the FFA convention trip overnight? Brad?
Second.
And Chrissy?
Including transportation.
I'll say but we, yeah.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor of approval of the FFA convention trip signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Move on to 5.2. Jean Bailey, food service.
Hi, my name's Jean Bailey. I'm with Tahoe. I'm your food service director. And at Jeff's invitation, I'm here just to give you a quick update on what food service is doing. It's come to my attention that a lot of people don't really know what we do or even what's going on in that department. So I filled out what's called a little bowl poured bite and gives you kind of a quick overview. So this summer, I put down the number of breakfasts and lunches that we served. We were still doing the bagged pickup program, seven days worth of meals, breakfasts and lunches. As you can see, we did over 17,000 breakfasts and 18,000 lunches. That, the serving of weekend meals and extra snacks ended with the start of the school year. We are now under a different federal program. It's SSO. So we, the guidelines are a little bit different, so we cannot give out the snacks and the weekend meals like we were doing. However, as you all know, that means that the meals are free to the children. All students can eat first breakfast and first lunches at absolutely no cost, which we're just delighted to do. Construction has just been lots of fun. We were allowed in, we were allowed in to clean up August 23rd. That was our first steps into that kitchen to get it cleaned up. District U had hired some professional cleaners to go in first, but then because of Health Department and whatnot, we needed to deep scrub it. We got the kitchen cleaned up, ready to go, feed the kids by September 7th, and it has been a little bit of a whirlwind. We've adjusted to having all the elementary school kids here. My team has adjusted to working all together for the first time. They're very used to working in three different schools kind of together for a short period of time. The expanded kitchen has allowed them room and space so that we have enough space. Everybody has a little department, you know, a little bit of division, enough room to move. Things are going very smooth there. We still have a few minor issues that we're dealing with. Small electrical fixes, nothing dangerous, nothing major, just small fixes. Minor things that construction, like we have an overhead door that still needs fixed, but it's supply issue. You know, they're kind of waiting on parts and pieces. So we're very functional. We've been putting out an average of probably 800 to 850 lunches a day. That's all elementary and high school. I believe that's about 70% right in there of the students that are eating.
What are the other students doing, can I ask? I mean, what are they, like, do they bring lunch or do we, I mean?
Sack lunch.
Sack lunch?
Yeah. We do have sack lunch kids. We also have some of the older children that either don't eat or have their friends pick them up a little something. But we started a program, we initiated a program last year called Pick Three. It was a food cart that just had a variety of foods that the kids who either normally don't eat lunch or who maybe pack a light sack lunch could go to the cart. If they pick three items out of different component groupings, then the district can claim that as a reimbursable lunch and the kids get additions to their lunches. That was very popular last year. We will be starting that again as soon as we're fully staffed. We're down just a couple of people. I've also had questions about the malt shop. We haven't opened that yet this year for junior high and senior high. We will be opening that as soon as we're fully staffed also. Hoping to do that in a couple of weeks, but I can't give you a firm timeline. We have supply chain issues. These next two pages are just a listing of some of the major supply chain issues that we know of right now. Not all of these are affecting us, but they are possibilities. In my orders, we're seeing quite a few substitutions. We are seeing some, some items that we're just not getting and some that we're getting maybe two to three weeks down the road where we used to be able to get them right away. Due to, we have a fabulous new freezer that is fully at least one and a half times the size of our other freezer. Because of that, I was able to start ordering early and we are ahead of the supply chain problem. So for the most part, even when I'm ordering and things are taking longer to come in, we're okay because we do have a backup. And that is that, most of that's due to the larger freezer. So, thank you. As far as programs, we are continuing with our LTO and our HOM program. The HOM is Harvest of the Month and LTO is?
Limited time offer.
Yes. I knew somebody would know. Limited time offer. Tomorrow, we're offering the green chili pork with cornbread as our limited time offer. And the kitchen manager, Connie P., Connie Prisbus, is a fabulous cook. She will, she'll do it justice. For our HOM raisin, we had broccoli raisin salad last week. For beets, we are having our beet chocolate cake Friday. Kids don't know, it just, it's moist. I know, it sounds horrible, but it's just a very moist chocolate cake. And then we had oatmeal chocolate chip cookies a couple of weeks ago to highlight our oatmeal. Do you guys have any questions as far as what's going on?
Do you know if the numbers are up or down from last year that kids are taking lunches?
Well, they're definitely down from last year. We could compare it to 2019 probably more fairly, and I would say we're still down a little bit from there, but percentage, maybe just a couple of percentage points. I'm not sure why we're down. I mean, the meals do not cost anything. As far as I have heard, as far as I've tasted and know, the meals taste good. I will be putting out a survey for the kids to find out what it is they're wanting to try and bring some more in.
I find it weird that it's, the numbers are lower when they're getting free meals. That's why I wondered what, you know, I think it would be a good idea to do a survey and see why that is.
We were serving seven meals a day, or seven meals a week. We were sending meal packages home.
But 2019, we were there too. You know, I'm just saying, it's, and now it's free. They were paying for it in 2019. So I was asking.
Sometimes what I have found is it's a perception of free as being lesser quality. I think if, if that's in play at all, only time will overcome that. I did honestly think that high schoolers would have more participation because we had more choices again this year. They really wanted their choices back, because they had their choices. I don't know. I do not know the answer to that, but a survey will help us, help us find out.
You're going to survey the kids, you said?
Yes.
That's a good idea. And how many positions do you have open right now?
Right now, I have three, two part-time and a full. I will tell you, I've had applicants, but there's a promise I made to my team. We worked very, very hard to get to where we're at as a team. And I've always told them I'd never just hire bodies. As long as they were willing to work shorthanded and deal with that stress, that I would hire people that not only could do the work but would fit in with the team. And I talked to them again last week, you know, to find out where they're at with that. And they are still willing to, to hold out because it's very difficult to work if you just hire bodies. Too much stress, which means though, of course, the malt shop is just a little bit later. But I do feel in the long run, it'll benefit the kids, it'll benefit everybody.
Do you have much trouble getting everybody through in a, in a quality time where their food's still hot and fresh?
I don't think so. I could ask the principals better, is?
No, I think they get through quite quickly.
Yeah. I think, I think they're doing a pretty good job.
We haven't had any issues, even with sixth or eighth grade. Or we're still, I think, fairly efficient getting kids through.
Okay. And I think we do have a second chance breakfast that is served to middle school, high schoolers. If there was a slow issue, maybe, Corey, are they getting them through fast enough or is there any issue there?
We are, we tweaked some things with the timing of sixth grade because we only have one cart available. Whereas the high school, they can go down to the malt shop, it's served there, and we have a cart up here so we can divvy up the high school better. So we just kind of tweaked a few things to balance, and that was mostly a couple of sixth grade sections coming out at a, at a different time. And it balanced the time they're in the classroom, first period, second period, with getting their lunch. So that seems to be going pretty well, and we started that last week.
Okay, good, yeah. Yeah, mostly with our short staff, it's more of a preparation. Everybody's, it's all hands on deck when it comes to serving and making sure that the customer experience is good.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, Jean.
If you don't mind, I'm going to leave. Four o'clock comes very early.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to number six, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the community ed assistance for further discussion.
Okay. That would be 6.3.5. Okay.
I'd like to also remove 6.3.7.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Anybody else? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda minus 6.3.5 and 6.3.7?
Some of them.
Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Can I add it, sorry?
And in addition?
But then we added.
So we do that over again?
Yeah.
So Brad?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda minus the two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. I'd like to thank Christ the King Lutheran Church for the donation of $100 to the wellness room. Pipestone Publishing for a donation of $1,345 to the athletic help fund. Double D Gravel for the donation of $100 to the middle school PBIS program. And the donation of $250 from First Bank and Trust to the middle school PBIS program. Okay? So then, we can go right into the discussion, right? Okay. So, Laverne's first.
Okay, so my thing with the community ed assistant, I don't mind having one, but I think we need to up our game. Now, if any of you have looked at the school website under community ed, it is severely lacking. You look at Laverne, I see that Jeff must have printed one off from Laverne. Look how thick this is. This is what, this is their fall program. And they have a winter one just like it, and they already have a spring out as well. I mean, if we're going to hire an assistant, I think we need to be doing something like this. I've been on that youth basketball board for seven years, and I think we have had contact with the assistant maybe twice. Never came to any meetings, never like helped us do anything. I think if we're going to hire someone, they need to maybe do something along these lines. I don't know. What does our assistant do?
So if you want something like that, that usually is like a full-time community ed director. That usually does that program and then also does ECFE directing. What this person does is they, well, we're starting an ABE program. We were starting that before COVID hit, and then COVID hit, and that went to the wayside.
What's ABE, sorry?
Adult-based education. So that would be you're getting your GED. We could do ELL, so different things like that. We also work with youth football. We've put on babysitting clinics, gun safety. We partner with our rec department in the city here because we don't have a full community ed staff. We did movie nights before COVID. We also did, do the soccer, the adult and youth league. We do youth sports through community ed just so that they're under our umbrella. And other activities, just to name a few, would be we've done painting classes, Christmas arrangements, like flower arrangements, hair for dads where we had dads come in and learn how to do their daughter's hair. Mindfulness speaker. So what she does is she or he takes care of money and registration and prepping for those classes.
So how do you get the word out? I mean, this is on their website. I mean, that whole brochure, and it's like planned out.
So when we were doing this, we were putting it out on the website, we were sending home flyers. We put it on our community ed Facebook pages, so, and we've always had good turnouts. I can show it.
I feel like a lot of this stuff in this packet, we do.
Yeah, it's just, it's not, I mean, it's not anywhere on the website. I mean, like, there's, there's driver's ed on there. And then there is getting a GED.
And that would be another thing we do too. Driver's ed.
I don't know, I'm just, that's about it. People are getting information about it is what I'm saying. It's just not in, on the website.
Well, I don't know, are they?
I am. I mean, I get information on babysitting class and things like that.
Well, maybe it's because I have boys, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I went, my kids went to babysitting class, and I know when basketball's coming out.
They can.
Okay, well, you know basketball's coming out, that's the board. That's the basketball board that puts that out. I mean, that's not community ed.
I know, Bo. I mean, rec, I get the rec thing from.
That's not community ed either. That's not on our website. But it's not on our website, I mean.
It is, under E-War Rec Center.
And we send it out.
Okay, but it's.
And we do send it out.
I mean, I'm just saying, well, I do get information about it. I'm not, the people that are in charge of it are.
I think a long time ago, they got rid of the community ed department, and then they gave it to the elementary principal. And then what they did is they worked with the city and they had a person that was hired by the city, I believe, that worked between the two. But then that person quit and they weren't able to find somebody to do that. So this person is actually filling that for us here so that we can actually do something with the community ed program.
Maybe the E-War Rec Center stuff needs to be listed under community ed too. Because I think a lot of the programs, even in that one, are basketball and, you know, things that we have but are through the rec center.
It's just, I mean, it, I don't know, their website is so easy to access. When we go to ours, it's like, okay, you got to click this link, and then maybe click this link, and then go here. I mean, I, you pull up community ed in Laverne, and it's like right there.
I'm just saying, you know, people aren't.
Jeff contributes to the rec center every year, right? Isn't it $20,000 a year?
$12,000 for one of the programs and $7,000 for the other one. One's for like the summer, one's to help with the summertime fund and one's to help with all the.
After-school programming.
Programming, yeah. But I think at one time, we used to have a plan like that, and I think that was cut, in a budget cut. Was anyone on the board then?
I, I remember him having that, but I was not on the board when it got cut.
But I'm thinking, I was the business manager, and they said it cost too much, and that's why they deleted it.
I do recall when the community ed director position got handed to Don Klein, I believe.
Right, and then we used to have one, then somebody said, why are we paying Pipestone County stores so much? And then they tried to eliminate the packet.
Which this, this is not, I mean, I printed that off the internet.
Yeah, it's just on their internet.
Oh, so they didn't have, they didn't have like an insert?
They send them, I got, I get one. I get one every time.
And it made, that, that one I printed. That one I printed.
And they do send them out because I get one every time they send them.
How many hours do we expect this assistant to work in a?
We've always set up to 15 hours.
A week?
A week.
And then, like, total, how much would it be total for the district to pay it? Like, over the course of one year, like, an annual amount, do you know?
Well, it depends on what we pay them.
I'm just trying to add up, like, the amount we pay to the rec center and the amount to this position. If we could reallocate it or reuse it in a way that maybe would be better. I don't know, I mean, just a thought. I don't know if we need to do that, I'm just.
Are the community ed programs not full? I mean, to me, they always seem like they're pretty full. I'd have to ask Barbara Pearson, but they always seem pretty full.
Yeah, they do.
I mean, do they have a hard time?
I don't think they have a hard time getting kids to do things like soccer and, I mean, I think that.
I mean, some of that stuff.
Well, the partnership too was because we have an E-War Rec Center where Laverne does not. And we didn't want to step on their toes as a school district and pull away all of their rec stuff. So that's why there's that partnership of working together.
When there's no reason for both of us to do it.
Right, exactly.
Seems like a good relationship, just maybe we need to get the word out a little.
Yeah, ease of access, I mean.
Yeah.
Which someone new to the community.
And that's something that.
We can most certainly, I think, this person or whatever. We just, when I, I mean, that first year, I mean, one of the things we talked about was community ed, and we really wanted to try to have more dedicated staff to help out it. And I mean, we really don't need a full-time person, so we kind of went with this up to 10 hours a week to just help coordinate and do this type of stuff. So that was what this position was, was all about. And again, we, we really haven't had any discussions about, do we want more out of community ed? Do we want to, you know, these type of things? I think if, you know, what we're hearing tonight, we can easily do, you know.
Absolutely.
Tweak up our website if you want to.
And like I said, it's been ed for like a year and a half because of COVID.
Yeah, right, there hasn't been a lot of it.
We couldn't do anything, so there hasn't been anything out there.
Looks like a strategy Laverne maybe uses is to put advertisements in it. And those businesses will probably.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of advertisements in there.
That there is. No cost to us if we do it that way.
So does, does this person, does this person have any more expertise other than the teaching certificate? Or, I mean, they don't have a community ed degree?
She has a passion for it.
But not a community ed degree?
No. Something she's always wanted to be a part of.
Okay.
But she does have a teaching degree.
Yep.
So.
Yep, I know this person, so.
And as already said, I've got some great ideas, and I said, love to hear them.
Okay. Okay, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the community ed assistant for Sean Ronnick?
Some of them.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Randy. Okay, all those in favor of approval of the contract for, for the work agreement for the community ed assistant for Sean Ronnick signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to 6.3.7. Marissa Erdman, ECFE parent educator. Is there any discussion?
I don't know, Randy, you think she's a good candidate or?
I'll be abstaining from this one.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the work agreement with Marissa Erdman for ECFE parent educator?
Some of them.
Chrissy? And Katie? Okay. All those in favor of approval of the work agreement with Marissa Erdman signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. One abstention, Deb. Okay, we'll move on to number seven, financial, 7.1, review elementary building budget year-to-date. Jackie?
Trying to pull it up here. Give me a second. No, I got to make it bigger. Everything, I just, basically what I do is I make sure our UFRS ties out to what we have spent, and then I prepare this for Carl Sanderson, and then I email it to Tyler. So he has the information, and it's pretty much where we stand right now.
Currently, we're at 26.7 million spent to date out of the 29 million. Carl Sanderson has informed me they will be kind of wrapping up people of, there's retainage. That's, is that the right word?
Yes.
Retainage until everything gets done. There, there are some companies that we're having some issues with little things. So they're being held back, and if, if they don't do their job, then you can use that retainage to pay to get whatever needs to be done. So most of the employee, most of the contractors have completed their work satisfactorily, so we will be seeing probably the rest of that being, going out here in October. So when it comes down to the end, we're, we'll be getting down to where we're nearing the end of this, this project, so.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions? Okay, it's a non-action item. We'll move on to 7.1.1, elementary building bills.
This month, the 1.5 million, so you'll start to see a little bit bigger number. They've been in that 400, $500,000 range, but with this retainage going, so good.
That's the next one, though.
That's the next one here, next couple months.
Any questions on the review of the new elementary building bills? Any questions? That also is a non-action item. We'll move on to 7.1.2, approved treasurer's report for elementary building bond.
Basically, I'm tying out the bank statement. I'm currently on, we have $3.6 million cash balance, which isn't going to tie out to your building budget year-to-date because I've transferred money from the building bond since this was prepared.
Okay.
Eventually, this will be zero. That'll be done.
It'll be a while yet.
I know.
Are there any questions for the treasurer's report for the elementary building bond? Any questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the elementary building bond?
Some of them.
Randy?
Second.
And Brad? All those in favor to approve the treasurer's report for the elementary building bond signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to 7.2, review of budget year-to-date.
Okay, this is the first one for fiscal year '22.
Okay.
And we're currently at 14%. Last year, we were at 16%. So it's pretty close. So I'm okay with that right now. I don't think I made any huge errors to prepare the budget.
Well, that's good to hear, Jackie.
If I did, I would do something, I guess.
No. Nope. Are there any questions? Any questions? That's a non-action item. Move on to seven point three, approved treasurer's report for August. Jackie.
Okay, we're, our cash balance is currently eight point one million dollars. Last year at this time was seven point one million. We appear to have a healthy cash balance. I would tell my answer, green light.
Okay? Are there any questions?
I'll move to approve the treasurer's report for August.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Brad? All those in favor of, to approve the treasurer's report for August signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion passes. Move on, seven point four, approve regular bills for September. Are there any questions on bills? Any questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the regular bills for September?
So moved, second.
Did you get that, Deb?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor to approve the regular bills for September signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion passes. Seven point five, approve high school activity bills for September. Are there any questions? Any questions?
I'll move to approve the high school activity bills for September.
Do I have a, Katie seconded? Okay. All those in favor to approve the high school activity bills for September signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to eight, board forum and information, eight point one, board reports and updates. Anybody have anything? Well, I think the open house went extremely well.
Yeah.
Heard nothing but good comments. The tours were really well-accepted by the public, they appreciated them. The kids I've talked to love the building. I did have some older kids come through, I think one was your, your daughter there. And they, they loved it, they wish they could go back. And I, and I asked them what they thought of, of the improvements to cafeteria for them and, and the food quality. They were happy with food quality, they loved their cafeteria, the seating and stuff. So I guess that's what I've got. The other thing is, we did meet with Chuck Sutton and the winter group on what to do with the properties. The recommendation is the two of them wanna work together, so they're, they're thinking, you know, doing a public auction. So is this where we wanna try and get that in there?
It's actually in your, it's in your.
Sit on the bottom of?
Board action.
Okay.
Item eleven point one four is what you'll make.
Make that.
Talk.
Okay, so I guess that's all I've got. Anybody else?
I just commented, I've heard a lot of really good things about the school, but I've also heard some feedback on a few items that, um, maybe we should talk about as a board. One being the size of the playground, I'm not sure if anyone else is hearing that.
I've gotten a lot of, yeah.
So I think that would be something we could maybe, I don't know if we need a work session, but just discuss that sometime. Since the building is so brand-new and our mantra from the very beginning's been to do it right, so I think it's still early enough to get that done.
I think it will help once we get a little more grass out there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that is some of it, but yeah, I would agree, I've had a lot of feedback from that. And I, I think I talked to Kevin about this too, but the, we need to make sure that if we're using that volleyball gym, or that gym, the elementary gym, that that door is open for sports, because we had people walking, older people especially, walking up to the door and then they had to walk all the way around through the whole back of the school to get to that gym. And I just think, why can't we have that, the door open for people to go right into the gym there? So I think that's something we need to think about, accessibility.
Well.
Well, it's, you're, you're scheduled at the elementary gym, so I parked at the elementary parking lot, I go up to this door and the door is locked. So then I walked all the way around and there was a lot, and then even if you park up here, those older people have to walk all the way around.
Yep.
To get to the gym on the other side of the school. And I get that you maybe wanna limit the amount of access points, but to me, they're, they're in the areas of the school more than they would be if they just came in through that front door. So I think we need to look at some of that, especially before winter comes, when older people are trying to get in and.
For basketball games or something like that, yeah.
Well, especially if you're gonna utilize, be utilizing that gym.
Yeah, we just need to work on, and it, you know, it was the first time we used it, so maybe that was part of it too, but.
Well, I know when we were looking at, at renderings of drawings, that was initially the, the idea was is a, you know, it was a path all the way through. So it should be utilized as an opening.
You mean the, the elementary doors?
Yes, yes. Yep, okay, anything else?
I just have a question. Homecoming, that was a great game and it was so disheartening not to see the kids like run out in the field and cheer with their teammate, I mean, with the players. Is there, is there not, they're not allowed on the field anymore, is that what the deal is or what, what's the deal, Cory? Do you know?
Yeah, we, we've limited access pretty much by students, fans onto the field. What we've done in talking with Mr. Zolner, we've looked at what other schools, how they approach it. We never used to allow it and then I'm not really sure how it really kinda came to be. And we look at it as a, a safety measure when you're dealing with a lot of, a lot of people out there and teams in the movement. So, we looked at it as the, the teams are out there, they finish shaking their hands and then coach meets with the kids and then, then we move on. And it's similar after activities here in the gym. It's, part of it is, is the, the health safety too, not having people mingle and, and that element. So we wanna move people out in a timely fashion, we're not saying get out, saying we want.
Well, now they just all go to the north, the bleachers and take their pictures in the dark and, I mean, they're still taking the pictures, they're still mingling. They're just not doing it out on the field.
I guess if that's, if that's what they wanna do, then.
I mean.
You know, I didn't, I saw some, some down on the end, cause I was down there, I didn't really see much else. And, I don't know, I, I think kids are, are moving, moving along and I think most parents had helped the other, other way. And I think it's a, it's an efficient way to manage an event when you have a lot of people.
Right. I was, I was just wondering why, I mean, we did it when I was in high school, we ran on the field. But I didn't know if that was something, that must be new this year, cause.
There's.
It started last year kinda with COVID.
Right.
Sure.
Anyone out there.
For volleyball and stuff, anyone, basketball.
There's, there's not a conference school that allows people onto their fields, so.
I was just wondering.
We'll also be in line with that.
Sure.
Okay, anything else? Mm-hmm. Okay, we'll move on to number nine, administration, administrators' report, superintendent's board report, Kevin?
Enrollment is up about three students, pretty, pretty stable that way. You do look at it, our, our elementary numbers are all up, so that, that's nice to see. The, the, some of the high school student classes have a little bit more loss in them, but those numbers are very positive, so. I think back to school has gone well, I know we've had a work session and things and we've talked, but the start of school overall has been, been very positive. I think everyone's in good spirits. You're right, the, the open house went over very well, people were just happy to get in and see things and really impressed with it, so. We're learning, you know, there's logistics, this is all new, things like Katie and the door. I mean, we just have to come up with new procedures and how we, how we operate and we've learned, well, the lunch, first, first day of lunch. Whoa, we gotta do some big things different and outside was really full and, and so we've, we've just been making those adjustments and kinda getting a feel for things. We've, we've been very open with staff and I know Ms. Barton's also been talking, or planning to talk to students and get some feedback from them also on where things are at. So, overall, it's been, been going very well. COVID monitoring has been, you know, again, takes time, monitoring, we have to watch, we're, we're not seeing significant issues. Families have been very cooperative. You know, if you're not feeling well, people are home, there's crud going around, which, you know, there's testing and we're getting negative, but there has been some positive and, but everybody's been doing a really good job of, of staying away and we're not seeing issues, so. If you told me where we were gonna be on October first, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't know and not gonna, we're not there yet. But I mean, overall, it's been going and people have been really good, so. The additional nurse helped a, a great deal with communication, monitoring and those types of things. I, I know Cory and Tony can actually be principals this year and not have to, you still get involved with some of the communication pieces when we have to talk to families and where they're at, but I'm hoping that we'll get some of the testing kits that, so we can send those home with families. We have at-home testing kits that we're able to get access to. So that'll just help if families wanna take a quick look and I know some have bought their own and, you know. So that, that, that's been good that way, but there is still something we're constantly monitoring and watching.
At this point, as the school stands then, just to refer the need for testing to a provider, is, or does the school have any?
We've, we've got a few of the.
Slidestest.
But as far as like the need to test, is that all?
Is it far as what?
The far as the need to test or, I, I guess I was just, somebody asking the question.
We can't require anyone, we, we, if you are sick, you, you can't be in school. We just ask you not to come to school and people have been, you know, we've had some where the nurses, I think, have had that conversation with the family that you may, you've got four symptoms here, you really shouldn't be thinking about getting tested.
Sure.
And then refer to.
Got it, okay.
And we've had some where, you know, one in the house is positive and the others aren't and, but they still kinda, we haven't, we really don't quarantine unless you have a positive case, so. But everybody's been really good about it, so. And I think that our numbers right now are very, very low and we wanna keep it that way. We don't have sick people around here, so that's number one priority is to not have that, so. But if we do, you know, we'll, we'll monitor and we'll, we'll do the right thing. Hopefully, it keeps isolated in a grade level or in a classroom area and we can kinda just deal with that and not deal with the whole school. But if we see it, if we feel like it's out of control, we probably would go to a distance learning for a few weeks and calm everything down a little bit, so. I, we'll just have to see how, how, and I hope we don't have to deal with anything, but if we do, we'll monitor it as, as needed, so.
Okay.
That's what I got.
Okay, then we'll move on to nine point two, principals' board report. Which one you want to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I think Cory went first last time, so. Just, we're settling in, as Mr. Enerson said, procedures and processes with lunch and dropping off and picking up and all of that are now very, going very smoothly. We got some great feedback on the back-to-school bash, everybody enjoyed it and loved it, even though we didn't do a full meal, but just the carnival food and having the bouncy houses, everybody seemed to really love it. Our title application is in, our title three has been approved and we're waiting on one, two and four right now. So we're just waiting on that. And then like Mr. Enerson said as well, I'm gonna be starting a student focus group with the fourth and fifth grade classes. I'm taking one student from each class and then meeting with me once a month, we're gonna take a different kiddo each month and then just ask them different questions about, what are you loving about our school, what are some things we can improve? Some things about PBIS, like what are some rewards you think would be really fun for students? So just kinda getting their feedback and their input on some of the things that we're doing with our new building, so. That's all I got.
Okay, anybody have questions for Tony? Any questions? You're next, Cory.
All right. Two things, first of all, our middle school, we've been working on, excuse me, moving, moving to our positive behavior intervention and supports implementation. And we're hoping to do a kickoff on October twentieth, which is right before MEA, so we met, we met last week, kinda talked through how that would look. We've really focused on what are the types of acknowledgements we need to be giving to kids, how we can do that well and then the rewards that might come as part of that. We've got our behavior matrix, which basically means we've got our expectations in place. So now the communication is gonna really amp up with our students. And then the whole idea behind it is that we wanna reinforce the positive behaviors that, that we see on a regular basis and do it consistently throughout our middle school. So, pretty excited about that and, and we'll, we'll do some more planning before that October twenty kickoff. Planning to bring all the kids together in the auditorium and, and do some fun stuff, introducing the program to them. So, that's what we have at the middle level. At the high school, obviously, we're done with the homecoming, some of my favorite words to say. But I will say this.
No more to.
I've, I've done a lot of homecomings now and I, I am super pleased with how this student body responded to homecoming. And when you go to activities, for one thing, you can see the enthusiasm, you go in the gym tonight, watch volleyball and they're all in their white shirts with their white lies on, on them. I don't know where they come up with some of this stuff, but they, they, they've done it and they've done it pretty well where I haven't really had to say, no, we're crossing a line. So very, very pleased with how they handled themselves during, during our activities. I asked our, our teachers today during our prime time to gather input from, from our students and as I was reading through that this afternoon, very encouraging, things that they liked, things they didn't like. Never done a feedback form to, to that extent. I had the teacher input it, it was just verbal with the kids, tell me what you liked and what you didn't like and. So that was really good and, and I'll be using that with our student council and, and just thinking about how we need to do things in the future. But overall, very pleased with how homecoming went and now it's, we, we look at short-term goals. I met with the staff this morning and I said, time to talk to your kids, we have three weeks to MEA. It's a good time to say, all right, this is what we're gonna accomplish in that short, short amount of time. So, try to keep things fresh and short-term, but that's how we're looking at this now, this next academic part. So, just some of the things I talk about staff, to staff with, so. That's what I have for you.
I had a couple of people ask me about our dress code at the school and how we enforce it. So who is in charge of enforcing that and how is it enforced?
Well, I.
I, I just heard this from kids, kids being at school in inappropriate clothing is what I was.
Yeah, I mean, we, we go by, basically, if you look at the trends, so right now, the crop or whatever you call the, the midriff.
That I don't allow my kids wear at school, yes?
So, so you have that, we've had some examples of, of really thin and open here. Yeah, I'm, I'm not trying to pick on, on the girls, but that's typically what we've seen. I haven't had too many issues with, with guys to this point in terms of the, the dress code. Typically, if I see something, I'm gonna ask, on a female, I'm gonna ask a counselor to, to address it and there's, there's lines. I mean, I, I tell Mr. Boomgarden every day and we're like, well, okay, is this, is this appropriate, is this inappropriate? When, when we see and how we apply the dress code and, and usually the thin straps and, and midriff. And you look, a lot of times, kids will just, they'll pull it up and I'm like, well, there's nothing showing then, or they have a, a cardigan, is that what it's called? Good thing.
I've heard that they've been wearing cardigans over like tube tops. And then they're in the hall, in certain places, like they have them buttoned up and in certain places, they do not. So to me, that's, I mean, I just feel like as a school, we need to teach children also how to appropriately dress for situations, because that's part of life. You can't go to my, I mean, I can't go to work in a tube top and be, and everybody's okay with it, cause it's the trend. I mean, I'm not being funny about it, but I'm serious. It's, it's our, it's our responsibility as a, a school to teach kids that this is not how you properly dress for your day at school. And I just feel like we need to be cognizant of that, despite the trends, well, you know, I mean. I mean...
Well, I mean, you asked how we, how we dress and that, that's how we, we look at, uh, what, what's going, what's walking down the halls. And...
And all staff members are responsible for bringing, pointing that out. I mean, teachers typically, you know, they may see things and it's easier for them to let administrative...
I just wanna make sure it's being reinforced, that it's, that teachers are bringing to someone's attention and then it's being reinforced. That's, that's more my concern, would be my concern.
I may, I may refer out to the social worker today type of thing. I mean, it's, it's a daily...
I'm sure it is.
Daily day, yeah.
I mean, you have 1,200 students. I'm sure it's a daily thing, hourly thing, I'm guessing.
Do we have t-shirts or something that we give them?
Yes.
I love pipes don't air you out of school. That's what they should be, right?
Yep. Yep. They have options to put on what we ask them to do. Sometimes they have their own sweatshirts, uh, sometimes. So, don't call home.
I was gonna say, are the parent, yeah.
Yep.
Well, and, and I know, I think I was actually on the board when, years ago, that they were staff here that were complaining about the way some of the students were dressed. And then there were, that's when the spaghetti straps, the bare midriffs, the underwear showing on the guys and, and that, that was all addressed. And, and went into policy at the time and I'm assuming it's still in policy. So, there are policies there. It's just they gotta be followed and, and reinforced.
I think the policy says also no holes in the jeans. If I remember right from reading it, but that's a whole nother issue, isn't it? I don't know. Tell me what you're...
When there's holes, then there's holes. I've seen those too.
Depends on the strategic placement of them.
Right? As I say, yeah. There's holes and there's hole. Well, and there's no pants and...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Uh, is there anything else for Cory? Anything else? Then we'll move on to nine point three, Director of Curriculum Teaching and Learning.
Good evening, everyone. We are wrapping up our first FAST assessment right now. We actually have expanded our FAST screening. Uh, this fall, we included the ninth grade. They will be starting that tomorrow. Um, we are adding them now and in the winter, we'll add the 10th grade and 11th grade. Um, our nine through 11 lack a formative assessment. So, we, other than their course grades, we don't know how they're doing. How are they doing with reading? How are they doing with math? So, um, this year, all students are taking, it's called the FAST track assessment in math and the same thing, FAST track assessment in reading. And it puts together two assessments in one login. So, you have a specific assessment and you have a more broad assessment. And that gives us also, because we have both specific and broad, gives us information that we can use to plan interventions that are included within our FAST bridge system. Um, so I was sharing with our fifth grade team, um, digging into a few of the reports earlier, well, today's Monday, last week, late last week. And they were like, "Oh, wow, it takes, it takes you right to a plan. Then the plan takes you right to an assessment, gives you all the steps, gives you all the processes." So, um, I'm looking forward to win time. What I need time being much better used and focused on students' exact needs, um, in the future. So, we'll be wrapping that up tomorrow and then, um, actually on Wednesday. And then during our early out, our nine through, let's start over, our K through eight staff will be reviewing that data. And then I'll work with the ninth grade team on their own since it's their first time to review that data of what they're looking at, what, how they can use that, how they can use it to improve students' achievement. Um, I've been working with many teachers on using their new view boards in the elementary, plus we have a few here in the middle school, high school that have been installed. Um, it, they have a lot to learn. We gave them some basic training, so we're slowly getting there. And we have some very, we have some people who are like, "Oh, let me try this and how do I do that?" And so, that's really encouraging to me. I go and teach myself and then I go teach them and email a company or watch a video, so it's a lot of fun. Um, I'm also, besides coaching our four instructional coaches, I'm also instructional coaching for teachers. And so, that takes, uh, quite a chunk of my time, some, some days, um, in addressing teacher need and making sure that they have what they need, as well as coaching the coaches when they come with a concern or an issue or want to learn how to do something. Um, we actually are, on the 30th, taking our whole, um, whole instructional consortium, so all the people who are in Court One, Two, and Three, and having further instruction on something called the, um, ASL. It's a tool that we use to assess student learning. And so, we can bring that back and use that with all of our staff. Um, we're just starting rounding with our staff. I sent out quite a few emails this afternoon to get some scheduled times for rounding so we can communicate with our staff and listen. Um, I'm also part of the elementary literacy team, which is new. Um, we created this team to help edit and improve our elementary literacy plan. And so, we're on our second meeting and just kinda getting the ball rolling of, "Okay, what do we have in our plan currently and how does, how does that work and where would we want improvements and what's actually happening?" And so, we're not starting from scratch, but we're starting where we're at and looking where we wanna go. Um, and then just, um, our food service talked about supply chain issues. Curriculum is running into supply chain issues as well. Our fourth and fifth grade teachers do not have their MyMath workbooks yet, um, because their printing was unable to get it. And I'm like, "But you got me the first grade, the second grade, the third grade. Why couldn't you squeeze out the fourth and the fifth grade?" So, um, we're, we're working with them to make sure that they have what they need. And then I'm the person who updates the district COVID dashboard every Friday morning. So, making sure that it's, the, the spreadsheet is appropriate and we have what we need and it is, uh, easy to access on the webpage and making sure our, our staff and everyone are informed. One of the people I coached, they're like, "So, do we have a dashboard?" And I'm like, "Yes, we do." And she's like, that just made her feel so much better that she could have a look at what was happening in our district as far as COVID was happening. So...
And you can still access that on the website, right?
Yep. We put a new link up there, so it's right on the, um, quick links and you can get to the COVID dashboard. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
We're also been working to, uh, prepare for the yearly dismissals and working with staff to, um, help them communicate with families in a consistent and clear manner. So, it's not gonna be all over the place. So, we've actually put scripts and...
So, we created a script and we have expectations and, um, we have a parent survey that will go out, um, at the end, toward the end of each quarter. So, our quarter ends just right after our first round of calls, so that'll be perfect timing. Um, so...
I haven't seen an email or anything out that, that there is an early dismissal this month. And I know that it's on the school calendar, but I just wonder about elementary, if we should send something out. You know, because we have communicated with the elementary through CSOW to ask if they had needs for after school. Oh, yeah. I've seen that. I just didn't know if it had dates on it.
It did.
Okay. There's been a lot of communication. Okay. Then I, I say, I did, I did see that earlier.
So, there are, are there a lot of kids that, that are like...
Right now, I'm 13.
Oh, it's not so bad.
Yep. Yeah. It's not so bad.
In that big room, I don't know, but we have 13 right now.
Just a reminder of the early dismissals, uh, we, we plan to use two of them a month for communication, family, teacher communication.
And it's the first two of every month as we have it planned in our, um, early out schedule.
And the other two would be staff development days. So, that's, that's our, where we're at. Just reminding that why we did that.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to number 10, Discussion Items. They're non-action.
Yeah, we have, uh, with your work agreements with the teachers, with the paraprofessionals and with the secretary custodian work groups, uh, we have to put out a seniority list. And you have to give it two readings. So, this is the first reading of the seniority list for these work groups. Um, if we were to make reductions in staff due to budgetary reasons, that's when these lists come into play. So, um, we've shared with the staff in these groups, so they review them and they have a month here. And then we will finalize them next month. So, that's all that's needed for, for these.
Okay. And then it's, it still has to go to the appropriate groups for them to go through them and double check them.
They, they've, they've already been kinda working with them and gets it out to them and they send their memberships. And if there's any questions or things, they, we get them straightened out. So...
Okay. It's non-action item. We'll move on to number 11.
A bunch of 11.
Yes. Policy updates.
Each year, we're required, we have mandatory policies. These have all been updated by MSBA to meet current statute. I don't think we need to go through them all, but they're all major, big ones with discipline, harassment, violence. Um, well, I can, maybe we should just read them out loud for the record. Uh, policy 410 is the family medical leave policy. Policy 413 is harassment and violence. Policy 414 mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. Policy 415 mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. Policy 506, student discipline. Policy 514, bullying prohibition. Policy 521 is student disability nondiscrimination. Policy 522 is student sex nondiscrimination. Policy 524 is internet acceptable use and safety policy. Policy 616 is the school district system accountability. And policy 806 is crisis management. Uh, all of these have been updated by MSBA. They have very wordage, verbiage that we have, we're required to have. So, recommend you approve them all in one.
Okay. Is there any discussion on these? Any discussion on these policies? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve 11.1 through 11.11?
Someone?
Katie?
Second.
And Brad. All those in favor of approval of the policies 11.1 through 11.11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to 11.12, Approval of Obsolete Furniture.
Um, I've asked Mr. Stengel to look through our shed out there. And again, what aren't we going to ever put back in our schools? And let's move on with them. So, this is a list that he's come up with, uh, for now. Um, once you do this, we would then post these for 30 days. If anybody has any interest, uh, we most certainly would take any type of deal on them or whatever. But, uh, this is what we...
Where do they get posted?
Typically, we post it on our website.
Okay.
And, uh, I don't know if we've ever done it anywhere else. This one's got some items that might be a little bit more interesting. So...
Yeah, a lot of chairs and stuff.
So, we'll, we'll reach out with, uh, maybe put a little thing in the paper or something too. So...
Or even Facebook. I mean, you know, just on that way, our website, but...
Yeah.
Nope. Are there any other questions?
I'll move to approve the obsolete furniture.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Amy. All those in favor to approve the obsolete furniture signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to 11.13, Approved Snow Removal quotes for 2021, 2022.
We have one quote that is in order. Um, they've been, they know how to, they've been moving our snow out here for years and have the equipment that's needed to, to do what's needed to be done. So, um...
Okay. Is there any questions? Any questions? Can I have a motion to approve the snow removal quotes?
Someone?
Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Katie? All those in favor to approve the snow removal quote for 2021, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to 11.14, Brown and Hill Property Discussion.
Last week, we had a work session, um, regarding the properties at Brown and Hill. Uh, you heard from, uh, the Winter Group and Chuck Sutton Auctioneer. Uh, they, they move real estate. They understand this. Um, their recommendation was is to have a public auction. Uh, but, uh, that's where you guys get to decide what you wanna do tonight or if you wanna hold off, uh, but where things are at. Uh, if there is a motion to do anything, uh, and if we do go with that auction piece, uh, there was a recommendation of the 2% broker commission that should be included in, in, uh, in a motion. So, if anybody has anything, if there's any discussion or questions or...
Anybody have any questions?
I move that we hire Chuck Sutton and Winter Realty as a team and go forward with the 2% brokerage, um, or whatever you call it, addition, commission, there you go.
Commission.
Second.
Okay. Got that Deb?
2% commission for what?
Broker commission, yeah.
And that's to have an auction?
Yep.
Yeah.
Date and time will be determined by, I think, by these. They, they need to do work on preparation, uh, and understanding these so that, and they, they do the advertising and all of that. So, basically, as a board in the school district, we kind of just turn this over to them and let them do their thing.
Yep. Okay. All those in favor of, uh...
So that, just to be clear, the motions for an auction?
Yes.
The way they described it with Winter doing, uh...
Winter Group will take care of the legal and the, and the paperwork side of things and all of that. And, and probably a lot of analysis on the land and where things are at. And then my guess is, is when they kinda know what they want and a date, they'll probably bring us a, a recommendation for that and we'll move forward on the format. But we're really letting them get to work on this. So...
Yep. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of hiring the Winter Group and Chuck Sutton Auction to hold an auction and have a 2% broker commission, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.15, Brown Field Discussion.
Um, if you recall back when we were closing the Brown and Hill properties, the baseball association, uh, asked about the brown field and, and giving that to the city. Um, and so, we haven't had any, uh, we haven't done any, made any action on that prop, or on those fields. Uh, but we did learn through the study that, uh, that, that probably isn't gonna be a very attractive thing for those properties. So, uh, I guess tonight, we have to determine if we want to, how we wanna act on that request to turn that property over to the city, uh, for the baseball field or do we not? And, um, I guess that's the discussion we need to have tonight.
Is there any discussion from anyone?
I guess my only, I wouldn't even call it a concern, but the only thing I'm thinking of is that if the brown field did get moved out to this property to the north and we are talking about how there's concerns about the playground being small, would that be an option for expansion of the playground if we moved a field to that north side?
One field, no. I mean, we have, I believe there's almost 12 acres back there. So, uh, and, and they've, the baseball association did take a look out there at that property and said that, um, that does, like on the east side, that grass area where it currently is, that could hold it. Um, we could actually probably get two ball fields out there. Uh, we have talked with the Ag teachers about moving the garden to, to the south side across from their classrooms. They're very excited. We probably would also look at moving the trees because there is some concern about grass area for the elementary and having more play space out there. So, um, I think if you put in two fields, you'd wanna really take a look at what you're doing there and the size of those fields. But one for sure, uh, no problem with space out there. So, for any additional expansion of playground improvement.
Another comment I would add could be just being aware of that soccer field and then, um, the one that's being used at the Hill property pretty extensively right now. If we would put something over the current soccer field that's north and then sell the property, we'd, they'd have no place to play. So, just, sometimes going fast might not be the best thing, but going slow and just making sure we're understanding the impact on everything.
Well, and I, I've had a couple of people ask me too about winter and having a, a tree shelter, um, along the north side, worried about wind coming from that way, which I could see being a concern. You know, so I think we need to look at that too, if that's something that we need to think about doing.
Okay.
Because the north wind is gonna be cold this winter. There's not a lot of protection there.
No. Well, that whole end is...
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna, you got kinda the funnel from the building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, yeah, moving, setting trees and proper placement would be...
Right.
Something. Something, um. So I guess, is there anything else?
I just want, you know, I've had a lot of discussions, people coming up and I just want to make sure whatever decision we make, um, we do what's best for the kids and the community.
Right.
Part of me says the sale of land will be good, a good thing, but we're not doing it for the money.
Right.
Because everything's already paid for.
Yep.
So I think, um, I don't know, there's a lot of names on that sign at Brown School. A lot of people have a vested interest. You know, I know that neighborhood is losing the park. Maybe they'd like to still have a ball field over there because there's not much else. But, um, I, I don't know, I just, I don't want, I don't want to make a quick decision just to tear out a ball field when, when we've had a lot of people come here and talk to us that, um, you know, make sure we do it right. And I guess I would have felt better if we would, you know, if, if, if we did, if we did plan on tearing out that ball field, we should have been preparing for the new one already at this time, and we haven't.
Right, but I, I think, I think from even the, even like the baseball association's perspective-
Right.
They were expecting a pretty good chance they wouldn't get it. I mean, otherwise they'd have really pushed to put the fence in that they wanted to install. And I think they understood that let's hold off on that because they realize that we are kind of, kind of landlocked as far as we know, that the state's not going to let us do cuts into Highway thirty or whoever develops it, that they need that access point, um.
You know, and the other thing aside note is if we do decide to tear that field out, um, there's a lot of interest in some of that, you know, the fencing, the dugouts, and, you know, maybe even the scoreboard to use it for improvements at that swamp field.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea.
Well, I, I don't know why we wouldn't utilize it out here though at the new building, or the new field, I mean.
That we do, you know, that we do save as much as we can.
Right. Yep.
Use it someplace.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I, I personally think if, I mean, if a guy's going to save it and use it, then let's put it back with those fields. Because that's what it was intended for, was for the small kids to have fields.
Yep.
So, I guess I'll make a motion that we look at, at getting prices and stuff, what it's going to cost to move the fields, and we move the field. And I think we should send it to the Facility Steering Committee to, to do some in-depth research as to what, what kind of layout we can do back there. And make it the best usable grounds for the kids and the district.
Well, and the hard part, yeah. Yeah, I think it's something that we need to decide on though fairly quickly because if we're going to have an auction, you really have to kind of have your ducks in a row as far as what we're going to do with it.
In order to have the auction, you have to know now.
That's what I mean, you're going to have to almost wait a whole, I mean, because-
Right.
I don't want to rush anything either, but I'm just saying, I do feel like we need to move fairly quickly on it or-
Yep.
And I guess my point was if we, you know, if we're gonna move to get rid of that field, that there's a lot more decisions that need to be made than just say we're going to get rid of the field.
Oh, yeah, I would agree.
I mean, we're going to get rid of a field, but we're going to build one field, we're going to build two fields.
Right.
We're going to take some of it and put it at the swamp. We're going to leave the field-
Right.
And give it to the city. I mean, there's, there's about five different ways you can slice this.
Right, I would agree.
I think Jeff's recommendation, sending it to the committee for them to do that in-depth analysis around all the different scenarios would be probably the best way and the quickest way because we could meet pretty quickly to-
Yeah.
I'd like to see the other parties involved too in those discussions, like the baseball association. I know we've had some discussions with them.
Yeah, you gotta have them out there and get them involved and-
And if it's going to impact the soccer fields, the, the soccer community that's involved too. Because once that Hill property is gone and if we remove that soccer field, there's nowhere to play at town.
When, when will that JBS field?
Yeah, when, when is that gonna be up in?
They won't go play in two years.
Two years?
Next year, okay.
It ain't going to be next year, it's only-
They haven't even seeded it yet.
Oh, it's not even, the dirt working yet.
Yeah, dirt work's not done, so. That, that was my concern is just if we eliminate the soccer field now, there potentially could be no field to play on for two years. Not the rec programs because they're on Harvard, but like the, um, the adult leagues and the older kids. Because they do have quite a turnout for that.
But the problem with that is, is do you want to hang on to those two properties for two years until those fields are up and running?
Yeah.
No, I just think like getting creative with the layout that we don't touch the soccer field out north of town or north of the school. But we can talk about that, the community.
Yeah.
Well, and I don't think it's a, it's a non-problem in the wintertime. I, I mean, I just think we need more area for kids to play outside. So, to me, in the wintertime, it can be used for that. And why wouldn't it be able to be used during the summertime too, even though it's a soccer field?
No, I'm saying if they, they put the new baseball field on top of the-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know, if we would choose that location.
Not, you're not talking about the elementary recess. That's what I thought you were talking about, okay.
Nope.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I'm with you.
Because there's just a lot of area out there we could put it. So if we get creative with the layout, you know, all parties could be happy, which, I guess it doesn't work that often, you know, when everyone's happy.
No, and, and-
We can try, right?
You know, we don't necessarily have to, to put the ball fields there.
Yeah.
They could go over on this side, or the soccer could be moved over here and, you know.
Heather, what'd you say, twelve acres out there?
Right.
I mean-
Well, there's another thirty yards of long grass that isn't mowed that is usable too. So, I mean, there's, when you start looking at the space, that's where, um, we do need to sit down and talk about all of those things and, and get it all laid out, um, so.
Because no matter what we do, the fields will not be ready for next year's usage.
Well, yeah, that's unfortunately the problem, yeah.
That's right, is there a big rush to, I mean, if we want to save the material to make that brown land ready for sale, is there a big rush to put in another, is, would it logistically even be ready by next spring anyway to play baseball in? So, yeah, can we just take our time?
Take our time, make sure we do it right.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, you would, you would take out the, the hard stuff, you know? The, to me, the lime and that infield stuff, I wouldn't even touch it because you got it number one and fill it back in with black dirt. And black dirt is not cheap at all. You're better off, I think, buying new lime and-
Yeah, but we don't know that.
How cheap black dirt is?
No, how, how much it, because the lime's expensive too. So we don't really know that. That's all just us thinking that.
Could we get a couple of quotes and see which one could-
I think we need to figure out some of those things.
I know, I know the black dirt I've purchased has been way higher priced than what, uh, it would cost you to buy the lime and bring in. By the time you dig out and, and put it back in and all of that.
I just, I would like to see, yeah, that's cool. I would like to see some information about it because I feel like we don't really know a lot about how much it's going to cost to move it, how much it, you know, I mean, I don't know how much I should build a point baseball, yeah. I don't have any clue.
Is the swamp field on our property?
Mm-hmm.
It's ours.
So if we did do some improvements with some of the stuff to the swamp field, we're improving our own facilities.
And they did, like, the youth did use that last year at a tournament. I mean, so they can play on it.
And they, I think they need dugouts there because-
Yeah, they're-
The sun just beats down on those kids, like, yeah, so, there's no dugouts, there's no protection.
I, personally, I, there are fields, if we take out the brown field, there are fields to play on. They may be bigger fields, they're fields they haven't usually played on. It's not as easy to get back to the swamp field, but there are places to play. If we don't get this done, we may not be able to have a field in place for next spring. We also asked about holding off on selling these properties, but, I mean, they said there's a, there's a risk with, right now, things are hot. We, we, you want to wait, you may, you may end up, things may turn around, so, um, that's, that's the hard decision.
Mm-hmm, yeah, you never know either.
No, I think we sell it, I just think we-
Yeah.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of people vested. And a lot of people that are interested in what decisions we make. We just need to think it through, talk it through, make sure we keep the community's support.
And inform them.
Well, and I just want to make sure when we're putting stuff like that out, like this, we're moving the, we're moving the trees here, we're moving the farm, I mean, that's, it's all going to cost a lot of money at this point to move all that stuff. So I want to make sure that when we're looking at some of this stuff, that we're really thinking about where we're putting stuff. So that in ten years, they're not moving it again.
Okay, any further discussion?
Can we get a reminder of what the motion was?
The motion-
Looking at getting prices to move field and send it to the Facility Steering Committee as to what kind of layout can be done.
Second.
I think that summarizes the conversation.
What does that, what does that mean?
For one, I think we need to find quotes on how expensive it will be to make a new field out here. That, I mean, that would be my, one of my-
I'd say you get a quote of what it's going to cost to dig everything out at Brown.
Are you going to keep Brown Field over there or are we moving Brown Field?
Well, I'd like to know how much it costs to move it, or I mean, how much it-
Are we going to leave it there?
I don't know.
If it costs three hundred thousand dollars, are you going to leave it there?
Well, I don't know.
I guess here, here's the problem.
If it, if it costs, if it costs less than it does for, that we're going to make on the property, then yes. I mean, to me, it's dumb to move something that we're not going to make money on the prop, that property. Why move it then? If it's not to be equitable.
If, if we're not going to move the field, and we're not sure we're going to move the field, then I think we need to pull the motion to go ahead with an auction. Because unless we absolutely know that the whole piece is going to be auctioned, which is what our motion is going to be, is, is right now, we, we can't go and say, just before the auction, that, you know, we've decided we're not going to do it because Brown Field is there. We're not going to include that in the-
Well, either way, they can start the legis, they can start the-
Well, it's already been surveyed. The survey is done, they know where the survey markers are.
Well, I'm just saying, it's already been passed that we're going to hire them. It's not that they have to start tomorrow.
Okay.
I mean, that's just what I'm saying. I'm just saying, it's not like-
To me, it's, it's an, it's a no-brainer. And I totally understand, everybody's in love with Brown Field. I like Brown Field. But if you're looking at, at what is in the best interest of the kids and the district, it's, you, you mark it, that whole brown piece of ground, which includes the brown baseball field, and you move up here and you build a new field.
Yeah, but we don't even know the cost. How can you say that when we don't know the cost?
You can-
Well, yeah, it'd be, well, I'm just saying, I-
Okay.
I don't know the cost of that, so I don't know.
That's fine. So you, you, we've got the motion on table. All, and we've had the discussion. So all those in favor of moving Brown Field up here signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye. Hey, I don't think that was the motion, was it?
No, there was never a motion for that. That was not the motion.
Well, it's to get the price, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. So that, then somebody's got to make a motion to do something. What are we going to do?
We made a mo, Randy made a motion and Chrissy seconded. Oh, who did?
Jeff.
I made that motion, that's on table right now to get the price.
To get prices.
Okay.
Look at getting prices to move the field and send it to the Facility Steering Committee as to what kind of layout can be done.
Is what kind of layout can be done, to me, that's like an aerial of what a field would look like? Or is that not what we're talking about?
I think it's like how they can put the baseball field with the soccer field and-
I think it's all conversations and concerns. I mean, you need, you got to look at your playground, you got to look at a baseball field.
Right.
You, you want to do all those things, you, you know, the things that are out there, do trees need to get moved? All of those types of things.
Got it, okay.
I don't know, what isn't clear to me is, is the intention to, to-
To move it.
Take Brown Field out.
I guess I can't make a decision on that at this point without knowing further information.
So I will amend my motion. So I can do that, correct? Okay. I will amend my motion to include the moving of Brown Baseball Field up here. And then to get the prices and stuff. So it will include full movement of Brown up here.
Then you need another second.
That would, that would, that would include then taking the fence down, moving the buildings, moving the scoreboard, and all of that, all of that will-
Removal of Brown Field from Brown's side.
Removal.
And to plan to put it up here. So that means we will salvage all of the-
Yes.
Everything there.
And we're sure that that land is supportive of a baseball field, that it's going to be dry and like-
These are what we'll have to, we'll have to do some leveling. There will be some groundwork that needs to be done.
There's going to have to be groundwork possibly.
I think that's where the Steering Committee will review.
It will not be as much groundwork as they're doing with the soccer fields, which we know is about two hundred thousand. I think you're talking a much smaller scale. That field's already pretty flat, so it's, and the baseball association is out there and looked at it, so.
I think that'll look like a, a good place to have-
Oh, yeah. They're actually excited because they would like a little bit bigger field than what's at Brown. They would like it built for three age levels, so it would be just a little bit larger and it would fit out there. But you need to do a little bit of flattening on it, so. But I don't, these are the, we have to actually proceed and I have to have direction to start doing that.
And if the costs are too high, we always have an opportunity to say no.
We don't.
We wouldn't do it.
Right.
We could find a different alternative.
We have some money in contingency on the project, that money can be used for this.
And the sale property, the dollars from the sale could use.
Da, potential dollars from the sale that could be used. You have fund balance that could be used. So, I, I mean, there's, there's all, but you need to understand that, that before you, I mean, before we say this is what the field is, I mean, which way is it going to be orientated? Are we going to add on to the playground or what are, there's all of those. That's what you don't have an idea of.
So the priority is making it so, you know, if the field needs to be there or not. And Jeff included that and was amended.
Yes.
Removing it.
This is on here because you were asked to give that property to the city, so I'm, you, you need to make a decision. Are you going to do that or are you going to move it? Because if you, if you leave it there, then you're going to give the property to the city.
I will second Jeff's amended emotion, motion, not a motion, Jeff's motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Everybody, and then Katie opposed. Okay, motion passes. Move on to eleven-sixteen, loading dock enclosure.
Give you some information, the Facility Steering Committee, uh, has asked the board to consider an enclosed loading dock. It would be under, are you familiar with our loading dock area? It's our shipping and receiving area back behind the kitchen. Uh, they would like to do a fairly simple enclosure. Uh, ISG would basically take care of the project in doing that. It's an estimated cost of about a hundred and twenty thousand. And basically what it is, is it allows the semis and the trucks that come to back up and have an enclosed area so that when they open that door, uh, the cold air elements aren't coming in. Also, we feel that it's a safety issue in keeping the areas free of ice and so, just one of those things that, uh, the committee's kind of looked at. I don't know, Jeff, Randy, or-
They would be backing into bumpers and-
Right.
So it would be fairly airtight.
This would be a project done next summer. We're not going to do it now and it would be thanks, a, a summer project that we would look at, so.
So, I'm on the Steering Committee, but I wasn't able to attend the last one. So if we approve this recommendation, are we like a hundred percent all in on it? Because I feel like some other stuff has boiled up to where we might have to start prioritizing some projects where maybe a loading deck isn't what we want to use project money for.
This would be to move forward, um, with planning. And then ISG would kind of be the project manager, like they were with the tennis courts. And then, once that were kind of put in place, um, they would have to go out and submit or ask for bids to, on the building of their quotes on this project. And then at that time, the, you make your final decision if you're going to move forward with it or not. There will be some expenses with ISG because they'll have to do architect and engineer drawings and things like that that someone has to have in order to place a bid, so, or a quote.
And, and I think it's a great idea. I mean, I do, I think it's good for safety and it makes sense to just, yeah, to make sure we're using-
If you do move forward with it at this point, it'll probably cost about twenty thousand for the architect and engineering fees that you're going to have to pay no matter what. to have to pay no matter what. And then I think the structure itself is about 90,000 is what they're, they estimated it at, so that's where, it was a 90 to 120,000 dollar cost for this.
We're planning to use project funds, though.
Yep, project funds can be used, our, our contingency is around, uh, 350,000 at this point, um, there may be a little bit more, I, there, that's, that's their conservative estimate, so I think that's where it's at. And we can use that, we worded the bond money, you know, so if we want to do it on fields or more playground, we, we have these funds, so we will be looking to utilize remaining, these remaining funds for, for these type of things, so... But you're right, you do have two, kind of got that play, grass area back there, what are you going to do with it, and how are we going to work that, and this loading dock, so...
Yep. Any other questions?
Facility Steering Committee asked for this to be brought to the full board, so...
I mean, I think it's good for safety of our people that work here, and I think it would be nice, um, but I, I, I too am concerned about, I mean, we need to know what we're doing with the playground, because I do think that should be our top priority, since the money was for this, the elementary school. So I think we need to make sure that we do that justice there. I mean, I don't want to overspend and not have enough to fix the playground.
I personally think it would be helpful if we just had a work session, so we could talk about it, like, in detail, rather than trying to make a decision at a board meeting, but that's, I just feel like we're going to have a laundry list of items that we're going to want corrected or adjusted with the new school, it's just like building a new house, right? You're really not going to know what it's like until you're in it for a while. And I know this project is in the summer, I also know I'm on the Steering Committee and I'm bringing this recommendation forward, so a lot of things have popped up since I'm on, you know, so...
I'm no longer recommending them.
I'm, no, I totally recommend that I support the project, I think it just takes a little bit more analysis before we...
We just need to make sure.
Okay. Well, then I'll make a motion to move the 1116 loading dock enclosure, to table that and send it to, uh...
Back to the committee.
Back to the committee and, well, a, a board work session.
I second that.
Yep. All those in favor of tabling the loading dock enclosure and moving it to a board work session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.17, certified, certified proposed levy limitation and certification report for 2021 payable 2022, set the truth and taxation meeting for December 20th, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
This is, uh, the board's, how you levy taxes and levy dollars from the taxpayers, uh, each year you need to do this. This is the first step, this is the initial, so it's recommended that you, um, it's not certify, is it?
Certify the maximum.
Certify the maximum.
Correct.
Um, which is where we're at. We then have two months, we present all this at Truth and Taxation, and then you actually certify it in December, so you're, you're not passing anything right now, we're just kind of moving forward and moving through the process that, uh, where things are at. You do have, Jackie put it into a nice one-page sheet, this is what, uh, the district levies on local property owners, uh, it's about 3.5 million dollars, uh, last year was 3.682, so school taxes are going down 4% uh, with this levy certification. Reason for that, drop in enrollment, uh, if you remember, like, the operating levy is, is, is 1,192 dollars per pupil, so when you have less pupils, you're levying less dollars, and we also, the age of our buildings dropped significantly with the new elementary school, so our LTFM dropped, uh, almost in half, too, so, um, so that's why we have a 4% decrease, which is always fun to say, taxes are going down.
Don't get to say that very often.
So, that, that's where we're at, we do need to... Do you have a form or something, or is there...
She's got something, has to be signed.
Okay, so it is, what does it say, just certify the...
Maximum.
Maximum?
I'll make a motion to certify the levy limitation and certification payable, or 21, 2021 payable 2022 for the maximum amount.
And then, setting the date.[1750.02]